The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on May the 2nd, 2023 at 10:00 a.m., Commissioners' courtroom in the County Administration Building, 207 Tack 70 suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Condon will lead us.
God, thank you for our lives in Brazos County, all the blessings you give us. Thank you for all those who are standing the watch to protect us and protect our way of life. Thank you for the honor of this Commissioners' Court, us being able to serve the citizens on this court. Help us in our work here to give you glory. And all that we think, say, and do as Commissioners, as a judge, and as county employees, and all those outside this room working in the county each day, help us to live in a way that makes you pleased and that honors you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing done. We will move to number three and have a presentation and our discussions. Presentation by Alan Day, General Manager of the Brazos Valley GCD, his annual report from the Brazos Valley Groundwater Conservation District. Alan.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Judge Peters, and the Commissioners' Court, allowing me to come and give an update of what's going on with the groundwater district. I need to forewarn everybody before I get started. I think, if you don't know me, I'm pretty intense on, especially about groundwater, pretty intense. I had a Dutch Brothers latte this morning. So I apologize if it goes any further, okay? I guess we're already loaded up. Nope. I need the other.
While you're up there, you tell us you're up in MPO.
By what?
MPO, I think you said.
Oh.
We're a little.
Probably can't do that.
I think it's the wrong.
That's going off into the distance, so.
It's kind of trippy.
Oh, just winging.
There we go.
Thank you so much. So annually, we are required to produce an annual report of what's gone on in the previous year. I gave this report in, at the February meeting 2023 to my Board of Directors. We sent the annual report out. We've given each of you a copy and the summarization, and you'll have that summarization in front of you also. I want to give you some highlights and then tell you what's going on right now. So we'll start off. The number of wells that we permitted in 2022, we had 30 wells that required meters. You can see the 10 are agricultural, seven industrial, and 13 public water supply. We'll talk more about the large project that's out in Robertson County that would account for the 13 water supply wells. Total permitted production was nearly 36,000 acre feet during 2022. Here's the breakdown of permits by aquifers, and you can see that the line share is in the Simsboro, which is the primary aquifer that's being used by Bryan College Station, Texas A&amp;M, and any of your water supply. So it was a little over 35,000 of the 36,000. Metered production in 2022. 2022 was a, I remember what summer looked like. It was very, very dry, and everybody's production was up, including some agricultural production. We, the 58,000 out of the Simsboro was by far the largest number we've had since probably 12, 14 years. So it was, it was up about 7,000 acre feet just this summer, primarily Bryan College Station and your public water supplies. Metered production by category, you can again see, we have some steam electric. It was nearly 6,000 acre feet, but it's primarily, you can see that the amount goes to municipal and rural water supplies, which was total about 49,000 acre feet of our total production. Metered production. Those are fees that were generated, and again, you can see that we are funded basically by municipal and rural water supply. Yes, we get some industrial use, but that's, if we depended on agricultural fees, you wouldn't have a groundwater issue. Simply couldn't, couldn't function. Total fees to be collected, we're a year behind, so we're collecting those fees for 2022 in 2023, and we'll collect just over $805,000 this year, which is the largest since I've been here, and I came on in 2012. Okay, all right. The number of exempt wells, that's a non-metered well, it's a domestic livestock or rig supply, we registered 631 this year, and most of those came from hustling on, driving around in the country and going, and there's a well we don't have, and there's a well we don't have, and there's a well we don't have, simply registering, because if we don't know that there's an exempt water well at someone's home or out on their property, we don't know that, we can't protect their property rights. When we, when we would come in and have a big frac well or some type of thing that would require higher production rates at a, in a larger production, total production, if I don't know you're there, I can't protect your well from backhoe to depression. So we've gotten, where we're out in the field, if we see a well that's not been registered, we'll register, send them a letter, and simply say, we're protecting your property rights. If you have any problems with that, give us a call. I don't get any calls, because they want their property rights Here's the breakdown from, by category, if you can see those. That's our total. That's what we have on the books right now. A little over, well, nearly 6,700 wells of all types. There's probably 4,000 wells we don't know about, literally. That sounds like a lot? Everywhere we go, I have a well, oh, and I've got one well over there, and I've got another well over there. They're everywhere. So my, I cajole people to please register wells. We just need to know where they are. Most, you know, the big myth is that we're going to come down and put a meter on everybody's wells and charge them for it, and that's the last thing I'm going to do, because I do not want to buy a bulletproof vest. I do not want to do that. Okay? Okay. We're currently, well, we've just finished our last DFC planning. DFC means desired future conditions. What does my board and the other four groundwater districts within our GMA 12, what do we want the aquifers to look like 50 years from now? And we allow for a certain amount of lowering of artesian pressure, and that is how we manage an aquifer, okay? These aquifers will always be fully saturated. We're not allowed to go and mine the aquifer. They're always going to be fully saturated. We work off of the artesian pressure that's created from the aquifer. When you drill a hole, artesian pressure comes back up, and we manage that, okay? So we have, we are on a new set of DFCs now. Let's talk a little more. Here they are. So in 2022, so the category there, the middle one, that's the actual desired future condition and the amount of total drawdown over the next, out to 2070. So in this case, the Hooper Aquifer will allow 167 feet of artesian reduction over the next 50 years, not to exceed that. We can't, statutorily, we cannot exceed 167 feet of average drawdown, which simply means from the northern far reaches of Robertson County all the, to the southern reaches of Brazos County, and we average those artesian reductions. We have 195 monitoring wells that we are quarterly going and measuring, so we know what the aquifer looks like. We know what pumping, the aquifer response to pumping is. So the one that's going to be of most interest to you here is that one right there. Our Simsboro DFC is 262 feet of artesian reduction, okay? The next slide. So this is the first over to the left, that's just a straight plane saying, straight line from, in year 2000, our desired future conditions start in year 2000, okay? That was zero artesian reduction. That goes all the way out to 2070 down here, okay? And that is 262 feet across that. That's the total reduction. Now, over on this side, oops, my bad. Hold on. Let me get back to where I was. Too many buttons. Okay. So the first line, from here to here, that's 17 years, from year 2000 down to 2017, and this number that it gets to is 28 feet. So the first 28 feet of reduction occurred in 17 years, okay? Then, as you go down, the next number here, that'd be 31 feet of average artesian reduction, and then each year after that, you have one, it goes down one, to get to 34 right here, which was in 2021. We were at 34 feet of that 262 feet that we're allowed, that we're allowing for reduction over that seven-year period. As of this time last year, we were, had used 34 feet of that 262. In 2022, it went down to 43 feet. Pretty stark, steep turn because of last summer. Last summer was a serious amount of pumping. We saw wells out here in the Bryan College Station well field go down 100 feet during the pump, during the season pumping, and then come, come back up, but only get back up 70 feet. We've lost about 30 feet of artesian head out in the Bryan College Station well field, okay? Which is okay. Everything, at the end of the day, everything's going to be fine. Nobody needs to get alarmed. It's all going to be okay because we managed those numbers. That 43, when I come back next year, well, let me, let me say this. Between 21 and 22, I said that wrong, between 21 and 22, we had the project over in Robertson County coming in, Vista Ridge project. That's all Vista Ridge, from 21 to 22. We're, we'll just be seeing, at this next meeting, we'll see exactly what the effect was for last summer's 2022 pumping. So that number is also, it's gonna, the next one that you see next year is going to go down again, okay? That's okay, though. All right. Here's our network. Those are all the wells we have that we're monitoring, and we, we took 460 readings off those 195 wells during 2022. Fee structure remains the same as it has in the past, and we will be having an export permit. We already have a transport permit. That'll be happening probably in about four years. We'll probably see some transport of water. We'll talk about that in just a minute. We continue to get into every classroom in Brazos and Robertson Counties in fourth, fifth, and seventh grades. We did the 4,900 kids that we saw in the classroom this year, and feel like that number will go up, back up next year. We still have a little bit of suppression of that because of COVID. Everybody's just kind of getting back to where they're saying, yeah, come on back and we'll be good. And we're, we're in the midst right now of our update of our management plan. It's due November the 30th of this year, and we're working diligently right now to get a, the update, initial update done to be able to send the TWDB for them to look it over and then see if there's anything that they might suggest. I'm sure that y'all have seen this in the paper. I'm sure you've heard it on the radio. UW Brazos Valley Farm, we, the board approved production permits for up to, well, let's just call it 50,000 acre feet. This was back in, back in October, which is more water than what Bryan College Station, Texas A&amp;M, have produced today, even last summer, okay? They got their transport permit in March of this year, and the water's likely going to be transported to the, well, they gave four counties, that'd be Bell, Williamson, possibly Travis, and Myland County. So we're hearing more and more about Georgetown, Clean, a lot of that. They're on surface water over there. They have no groundwater, and the Brazos River Authority have said, don't come to us for any more water. We don't have it, so there's only one place they can go, and that's to groundwater, okay? We struck, it was a voluntary deal with them that, to form a mitigation plan. They are paying for all, any and all effects of their pumping. If a well needs a pump lowered, if it needs a bigger pump and lowered, or if it needs a new well, they will pay for it at no expense to the current well owner. That's protection of the property rights. We're going to assure that those, if you have a Simsboro well, you're going to be able to pump water from the Simsboro into perpetuity. That's, that's our job, okay? And we do take that very seriously. We've, we've been out in the field, me and a part-time field tech that I've hired, and since October 18th, and we have about 300 Simsboro wells on the list now. We don't think that it's going to affect every single well, but we put them on the list, we're getting, we're getting initial water level readings right now. So we have a baseline, and we can see what the effect of pumping is as we go this year, next year, right on down the line. The novel thing with this, they're going to provide a $7.5 million upfront. So they're going to load our debit card two years ahead of any, of any transport, and we're going to start mitigating, okay? We're not waiting for it to be, we're being proactive, not reactive. Nobody in the state's even tried that. So I don't like angry well owners. I've, you burned up my pump. You know, I, that's the last thing that I want, okay? So others have, every other mitigation plan in the state has, they wait till somebody complains, and now everybody's unhappy, and that's just not where we wanted to be. So a very novel way of going about doing it. Once they actually do start transporting 12.375 cents of their total 17 cents that they'll pay on, on all production, will go into the mitigation. will go into the mitigation fund and will be used for the effects of their pumping out into perpetu, however long it needs to happen, okay? So, and that'll be a recurring thing. It, it just always money going into the mitigation fund for us to be able to mitigate damages literally in, in any of the aquifers. And... I think that was the last one anyway. So if y'all have any questions, I saw a lot of people listening. If you got questions, I'd, sure answer them if I can.
Yeah, um, a couple of things, if you don't mind. The, okay, part of the, maybe you hit this and I just missed it, but it was the 17 cents export versus the, what for, for the UW project? Is like less than that, is there?
So it's 17 cents total, okay? That's, and so 12.375 goes into the mitigation fund. We, it's, it's reduction fee plus transport fee.
So it's, okay, so it's a, it's a, a component of the 17 cents?
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't pick, sorry, I didn't pick up on.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't make that clear a while ago.
That's, uh, that's quite all right. And then, um, do we know of any other future oriented, uh, projects like the UW that are looking at, uh, stuff out of our groundwater conservation district for export?
I've had several inquiries from local landowners in and around that project that are interested in possibly obtaining permits, uh, but I haven't received anything. I do know that, uh, we still have some permits that are going to be coming in for College Stations. Got a new well or two that they need. Cal just got a new well. Rural Water Supply, uh, Robertson County, they've just gotten one. Wixson, I've got a permit up, uh, next week for them.
I know that they're doing transport for Weldmore and SUD, but they've already got their.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And, and again, I, I don't know of any. It's going to be difficult, the way you think, not difficult. You can certainly turn in an application and you can certainly get permits. But on an economic look, you have, if you have a big well field to the northwest of Hern that's coming, and then you have the Brown College Station, Texas A&amp;M well field to the south, and those two cones of depression, those two centers of pumping affect each other, okay? But they're far enough away from each other that it's, that's all right. And then you have the Vista Ridge project, which is over the other side of Caldwell. So you only have three major pumping centers to come in with and try to have another transport project in here. It, it, to me, I'm going to give you my opinion, it doesn't sound economically feasible to do so. Because now you've already, you, if you try to put one in between Hern and Brown College Station field, now I'm already fighting these two, and now the cone goes down. It's cost that much more to produce. I, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I'm not going to say it wouldn't happen.
So the lifting and cost is what really makes the big difference?
That's the driver.
Got you.
Absolutely, it's the driver.
Okay. And then, uh, historical use, is there anything? I know there were some concerns about historical use for permitting. And is there anybody that's using, there was some concern from some Robertson County folks about people that were using water and they were actually, uh, to get their historical use up. Do we have anything going on?
We have all our historic permits and, and at this point, there's not anyone using what they permitted. Um, so that, that's not of a concern. It's really not, and it's a good thing. It, Brian has more permit than what they're using. Same way with College Station, same way with A&amp;M. It's a good thing that they do. They've got the cushion to, to be able to, to move up and, and still have their historic use. But they're out looking for, they're out being futuristic and long, looking long-term and going, but we're going to need more water even from the historic use. And they're beginning to plot wells in, so, new wells.
And then, do we, do you think there's going to be more development? I know most of it's Simsboro and Carrizo, but you think there's going to be increased development and completions in other zones within?
Not enough waters, the, there's not enough water to be able to be economically feasible to try and get any amounts of water. You've got the Sparta, uh, that's very local to here. And, and, and it's got, tends to have methane, you know? So if you get a little gas, it's just harder to produce. Uh, and it's, it's just not as robust. Uh, the Carrizo over here is not nearly as robust as it is as you move to the south and west. By the time you get over to Caldwell County and over to Gonzalez County, that's the primary aquifer, but they've run out of the Simsboro. We just happen to be in the sweet spot of the Simsboro, absolutely the sweet spot. So that's where you're going to see the development.
Great. Well, thank you.
You bet.
So I know that, uh, Burleson County and I think Myland County are already selling water. And I think the same aquifer that we draw water from. Have we been able to see any, that it has impacted our, the aquifer?
That's what you saw on that, on that downward tilt.
Uh, that was, that's part of the reason that.
We see the effect of, we've seen that, they have two aquifers that they're, that Vista Ridge is pumping from. The Simsboro, about 40,000 acre feet, and 15,000 from the Carrizo. We've seen a little decline in Carrizo. It's going to, we're going to see that now for the next couple of years. It's a tighter sand, so it takes longer for the effect to spread out. It's more localized, and then it slowly spreads out. And the Simsboro, it's a much larger grain of sand, so it doesn't do as much local as it does, as it reaches out. Uh, the Simsboro, we, we began seeing, we didn't see, they turned their pumps on April of 2020. They went full bore, uh, in June of 2020. We didn't see really any effect, uh, going into March of 2021. But then all of '21 and all of '22, we saw the decline coming in from their effect. And we'll continue, and it hasn't slowed. That hasn't slowed down. We've, on an average, it's somewhere in, in Robertson County, we've lost somewhere between 17 to 20 feet of artesian head. Down here, it's going to be higher. Uh, it's hard to tell exactly what it was because of the enormous amount of pumping that happened last summer. So, but we'll consent, we'll continue to see that at some point in the not-too-distant future, probably within the year, we're going to start, we'll see a settled-in effect of Vista Ridge that'll, that we can look at annually, because it's a constant pumping. It doesn't vary up and down. So once that levels out, we'll be able to say the effect of Vista Ridge is two feet per year, or whatever it might be, okay? I don't know if that answers your question or not, Wayne?
It does.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
All right, thank you.
Then, uh, B is a presentation by Charles Wimp, Brazos County Purchasing Agency IP, 22624 Architect, Roden Bridge, and Heavy Fleet Building. Charles.
So one of the projects that the Commissioners Court approved in the budget for this fiscal year was to start work on the Roden Bridge building. Their building has fallen into the point that it needs some repairs, remediation, some issues. And so we have undergone the task of engaging an architect to look and evaluate and see what our options are. So the first, the design phasing, um, in, per the contract that the Commissioners Court approved was two phases. Number one, the feasibility, feasibility of renovations versus new build, and then subsequent to that, the full design. So we worked with the Roden Bridge Department to evaluate what are two options? Either build a brand-new building and abandon the existing one, or to renovate the existing building. And so through that process, we got estimates from the architect firm and came up with the numbers you see before you. New building is about $3.1 billion. To renovate the existing is about $2.2. Now, as a part of that, the renovation is actually much smaller than that, but we are going to potentially, um, take two steps to that. First, we will take the existing ag extension building, the old ag extension building that is in front of the Roden Bridge building. And we're going to put a new roof on it. We're going to go through and point up some of the cracks in the walls and make it good. But according to them, the architect and their engineers and our facility services, the skeleton is there, there's nothing wrong with it. We just need to do some cosmetic, uh, put a new roof on it, stuff like that. So we will renovate that building, and that estimate is about a little over $200,000. And then move them into that building to operate out of for a period of time while the existing Roden Bridge building is being renovated. Because of the economics of it, we decided to pursue that a little bit further. So the numbers that you're seeing before you include the construction estimate. They include the design fee. And then we put in the FFNE, the furniture fixtures and equipment furniture, different things that they would need inside the building, table, conference tables, chairs, stuff like that, at about $50,000 for each of those. And so the results of that are what you see before you. Uh, as well as if we build a new building, it's going to cost a little under a million dollars more than it is to renovate. And so that is kind of how we looked at going forward. So in the renovation additions, on the exterior, they're going to add windows, so it will be a much more aesthetically pleasing. It'll be a better environment to work in than the box that they have right now. On the first floor, we're going to have a conference room, enlarged and more secure part storage for fleet. Um, they'll have a bigger area to operate out of, and then we will also have an elevator. I tried to find some construction jokes and insert here, but they weren't very good. So I'll just leave it at the information. Uh, the second floor will have a large break room. Uh, we'll have added restrooms, um, and then a conference room for them to meet up there with engineers or developers or what have you. Uh, additional offices and space for, space for growth of the department. So we're not just planning on the people that they have right now. This is looking further on down the road for additional personnel, for right-of-way agents, for supervisors, um, so forth, as the court allocates those. So here is a architect's rendering of what we have. And you see these additional windows. The second floor is already there. It's not utilized right now, with the exception of Ken, uh, our fleet manager for heavy and light fleet. Uh, he's on the second floor, but he's on an interior space. He has, oversees the shops there. Um, but we would have these additional windows on the second floor to let more light come in, to make it a better work environment, um, for the people that moved in there. All right, and so here are some rough, very rough, very preliminary architect schemes. So the, the first one is looking at it as you drive in the gate to Roden Bridge and you turn left to look at it. You still have the big bay doors, the shop is still intact. And then you have a reception area here at the front. And then on the backside, everything pretty looks, looks the same. But from Highway 21, if you could see through the trees, this is what you would see. Again, it's kind of what's already depicted in the previous drawing. And this is really hard to see, but, and, and I don't know that you necessarily care about the details of that, but they're available. Uh, we can get you any and all information. Um, but essentially, it allows for an expansion of the existing space that we already have that would go unutilized if we were to, um, build a brand-new building. We would still have to maintain and upkeep and, and, uh, clean and condition and all this, this space. So it made more sense, um, we think, to go ahead and renovate the, the places we already have for a much cheaper cost. And then the second floor, uh, more fully utilizes it. Uh, right now, there's, uh, like a gang bathrooms, uh, down here. Those would be demoed and make room for some additional bathrooms up here, a big conference room, um, and then the offices as seen fit. So we are currently budgeted for this project about $6.2 million. Utilizing the numbers that we have, we think that we can get it in for less than half of that. Going through our process has proven to work out pretty well. We wind up seeing some savings and all, um, that we originally was not earned paying. And so, do y'all have any questions?
So the renovation of the existing ag extension building, so that you could utilize it temporarily, what would be its use after the renovation of the Roden Bridge building is complete?
Whatever the court sees fit.
Okay. So it'd be otherwise, you don't have a plan for it?
It would be usable for a growth of other departments, relocation of departments as needed, uh, depending on what the court sees.
Yeah, and I think that, that, what's being proposed, I think, for that renovation is a, uh, kind of a preliminary issue, because we don't have really a, a use that we're actually going to, you know, plan on right now. So it'll be to get, uh, Roden Bridge in there, but not a full-fledged renovation of that building until we decide what needs to go over there. And then there may be some additional funds that would need to go to that building in the future, but we don't need to do that.
I think most of that's pretty much just deferred maintenance on the structure that's there, right?
Yep. I mean, that's really it.
It's not that, I mean, it, it really is. I mean, it's, the skeleton is good. We're just going in and putting new skin on it to make it more habitable. Um, we're going to put, um, take the carpet out. It'll be a concrete floor because of the nature of Roden Bridge and the work that they do. Um, they come in with muddy boots and all. Um, so that way, we don't ruin brand-new carpet that we put in there with mud and asphalt and stuff like that. But, um, with very, very little work, you can move in whoever it may be. Ms. Marsh has expressed interest in wanting to move out there. But whoever, whether.
You've really hit the mark.
She's going to punch me later.
Are you suggesting the judge move out there as well?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Yeah, so the, the, the operations, because we're in a, we're doing renovations and improvements to a, uh, existing workplace as far as that goes. What's our contingency as far as where are we going to put all these folks while we're doing the construction? Is it going to be able to work? Everybody's going to still be able to be there, do what they need to do. Uh, obviously, out in the maintenance, uh, Bay Area, that's all going to pretty much be the same, I would guess. But, uh, where are we going to put people in the meantime that are normally being displaced?
So the, the, the primary goal for the phasing that we have, uh, phase one of construction would be the, to relocate those, uh, to, phase one would be to renovate the ag extension building, make it habitable. Then we move everybody from Roden Bridge to there. And then we start, phase two would be the construction or renovation.
I may not have picked up on that if you addressed that previously, so my apologies.
It's no problem, no problem.
Okay. Yeah, the other one is, is, um, 22.5%. I guess that's the, that's the cost of doing business, right?
Say that.
The contractor fee and general conditions, I think that's what the GC means, right?
Yes, sir.
That's the 22.5%.
What's, what's not in that, and what I have put into these numbers, is the design fee of 7.5%, um, as well as the FFNE. And so there's some other variable. Those are not tied down tight, um, 100% yet, but that's a pretty decent idea of what we anticipate the cost to be.
Okay.
And those would apply to either one or two?
Yes, sir. Those are applied equally to both options.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're individually, do we, are we going to go out and bid the whole thing? Or are we going to bid phases of it? How, what works best there?
We anticipate that there would be efficiencies if you bid the whole thing. You have one mobilization, uh, one setup. They do phase one. You have a whole lot less coordination, uh, potential for errors if you bid the whole thing as one package.
I think that sounds great.
Uh, Charles, what's the timeframe between, uh, expectation of getting the job done with the renovation of the old ag building and then, uh?
It would probably be six months or so. We'd, again, we'd have to. We'd, again, we'd have to wait until we see what those bids come back in as, but we anticipate six months for that renovation. They don't have to redo a whole lot of structural members, it's primarily chipboard framing, electrical plumbing, stuff like that, so six to eight months, something like that.
And then the renovation of Roden Bridge?
I'm sorry, let me back up. It would probably be about three to four months for the ag extension. I apologize, I didn't answer that correctly. Three to four months for the ag extension building, and six to eight months for the Roden Bridge renovation.
So within a year.
Roughly, and it would, we probably, we need to, we have not gone through the full design yet. We wanted to make sure that we were going the right direction, but the design will probably take another six to eight months tops on that.
Well, I want to applaud y'all. I mean, budgeted for over six and spending just half of that for something that works out just as well, I think is a great use of the funds that we're trusted with and addressing the need Roden Bridge badly has. So kudos to you and everyone involved with that decision.
And Roden Bridge played a very key part of that. Ms. Barthanna and Fred and all of their folks have looked at that, and they were a key integral piece to getting that done as well.
Fantastic, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Charles.
Thank y'all.
Next, we will consider and take action on agenda items four through 19. Number four is a presentation and donation of historic Brazos County Courthouse newel post and a block of red limestone from the 1892 courthouse to Brazos County with a value of $2,500 from Justice Bill and Barbara Vance. And I'll need a motion and a...
Motion for approval?
Second.
To accept.
Motion made in second. So Judge Vance, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, Judge Kane, can you make the second?
I did.
Judge Vance reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, maybe three, I don't remember exactly, and told me that he had a newel post from the courthouse that was torn down in the 50s, that we see some, at least some pictures of around that was, you know, we all look back at it and think, what in the world did they tear that building down for? You know, but it's gone, but there are a few remnants around, and this is one of them that I am very excited that Judge Vance thought of us, Justice Vance, I mean, I know that you were Judge, I think you, I looked, and I think you started with the DA's office maybe in '64, and then took over as county judge in '67 and served till, I don't remember, '78 maybe, or something like that, and then, and then after you were... Yeah, you want to, I was going to, I'm going to have him certainly come up and tell the story, but I just wanted to give just a little background. And then he served as 10th Court of Appeals for, till 90, no, 2000. Why don't you give us a brief story of how you acquired this and...
Sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint.
We're glad you don't.
But you've got the real thing out there.
I think this object speaks for itself. I consider that to be a real art object.
Yes, sir.
It was part of the 1892 courthouse, as you said, which the Commissioners Court tore down in 1952 and built one that's now on 26th Street. Judge AS Ware, this is all my understanding, Judge AS Ware purchased this newel post, the downstairs newel post from the origins from the 1892 courthouse, purchased it at either a sale or an auction that the county had in 1952. I'm not, I'm not sure which, the newspaper article kind of indicated that they had a sale and then they might have had an auction later. But in any event, Judge Ware wound up with this newel post. His daughter, Annie Ruth Ware, was my secretary for most of the time that I was county judge. Judge Ware left this to his daughter, Annie Ruth, who gave it to me. It's been in Barbara and my living room now for most of 50 years. We're making some changes in our living arrangements, and it's our honor to present this newel post to Brazos County so that it's at home where it ought to be.
Yes, sir. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you reaching out and offering that to Brazos County, because you really, that's a, my hope is that as we remodel the entryway there, in the courthouse, that we can figure out maybe a place that it would be appropriate to position the newel post. I mean, that's fantastic. It shows the architecture of that building that was torn down.
And the workmanship.
Yeah.
I hope you can, and I hope that it finds a home here that will last for a long, long time.
Yes, sir.
I do want to add one thing, if you take that, when Barbara and I loaded it in the vehicle to bring it down here, we noticed in the bottom that there's some nails sticking out, they are square nails, which dates that piece to the 1800s.
Yes, sir.
And the piece of, I guess that's...
Thank you and the Commissioners for accepting this.
Why don't you and Barbara come up? And then the piece of, I guess that's sandstone?
Limestone.
Limestone, okay.
Red limestone.
That's pretty unique, because you don't see a lot of limestone that color.
I picked that up off a piece of property that we acquired that had several blocks of that on it, and I just decided that I ought to keep one for old time's sake, and there it is. It's a piece, that's a piece of the original courthouse.
Well, I hope this will be in a display case so that it won't be touched by everybody, but it can be looked at and enjoyed and appreciated, and we certainly appreciate your gift. You're very generous, and we appreciate it, and the citizens of Brazos County going forward in perpetuity will appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm not so sure we shouldn't have it as something that we all touch, you know, before we go into the field or whatever like that, like athletic teams do and everything.
No, no, I think that the grease and oil from hands would deteriorate over years.
It's always cool to be, it's neat to be connected with your heritage, and thank you.
Judge, why don't you and Barbara come up and...
We'll take a picture.
Picture pictures here with the... Sure. How to get us all in here.
Sure.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Chair, the Kansas Historic Commission has a new board for the city's town, Washington's a member of the Historic Commission.
If you guys want to get on this side, the neighbors will have the stuff. Let's switch that way, just a tiny bit, so that we get the stone shown. I don't know that it's going to be locked. It's pretty substantial. Okay, ready, one, two, three. One, two.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's nice. We're just trying to get a little bit of film.
We voted?
Yes.
All right, we did. So we will, we will now move on to number five. Approval of, approval requested from Robert Skip Richter with Brazos County Ag Extension Office for the transfer of duties from County Administrator to Chad Caperton, County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources. Robert Skip Richter will continue as County Extension Agent in Horticulture.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. And I don't think they're here today, I think they're going to come maybe next week and, we met Chad, but, you know, to reintroduce him to the court. Number six is authorization, did we vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is authorization for the county judge to submit a form to the Texas Council requesting a portion of the unclaimed capital credits received from electric cooperatives for the year 2022 to be returned to Brazos County.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
I was just questioning, do we have any idea what we're talking about amount-wise here, or...
I don't know. Katie, do you, do you have any idea what that return might be, or Nina, either one?
I always guess.
Yeah, I noticed in the use, in the use requirements, it's just pretty wide open, so that's great. Thank y'all for putting this together for us so we can, I mean, hey, the money's going somewhere, it might as well come here, right? Thank you.
Did we vote on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is approval of a following committee for RFP 23-124 Electronic Communication Services.
Move approval A through E.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight, permission to advertise for bid or advertise RFP 23-124 Electronic Communication Services.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of contract CIP 23-596 campaign financed with Vista SG in the amount of $2,000.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion.
Question, I know that this is about campaign finance, but then we've just recently, we're required to submit our personal financial statements. Will this include PFS as well as campaign contributions or that requirement?
I'm not sure that this had anything to do with that finance report that we had to turn in.
Okay.
Charles, you may want to, are you...
I'm sorry, from reading the information...
I don't think it has anything to do with that, but I don't have any particulars on that piece.
Okay.
I can't remember, I don't, I don't have enough detail on...
What I read on, in the information is that it was, it was more effective to return that part to candidate control, if I read the information correctly, but I was just curious if beyond campaign finance reports, that also included the Ethics Commission's requirement for personal financial statements as well.
I think that particular question may be better answered by the elections.
Okay.
Commissioner, I apologize, I don't...
No, that's quite all right, just was just curious. Thanks.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of final plat of Agland Business Park Phase 3A Block 6, lots 20R-A, 20-R-B, and 25.029 acres, J.H. Jones survey, 2A26, City of College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located in Precinct 1.
Yeah, I don't believe this property is actually in Precinct 1. I think it's in Precinct 4.
You could be right, I don't remember, maybe under the old...
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't mind approving it, and usually, you know, we make motions according to where it is in the precinct, but I think this is in Precinct 4.
I think, I really do, I think you're right, too.
Yes, well, I'm, well, I move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion.
I guess we need to check and make sure that it's in Precinct 4.
Precinct 4, right.
Yeah.
You'll get back to us?
But, yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so the motion in second was made to approve that located in Precinct 4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is approval of final plat, 2.5 acres being a replat of lots 72-75, hollow height subdivision, TS Plain League, abstract number 53, City of College Station ETJ, City of Bryan, ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located in Precinct 2. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is considered to take action on Wixon Creek SUD utility permit to construct road board for a four-inch water line crossing under Harbert Road located 50 feet northwest of Della Love Road, sites located in Precinct 2. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is considered to take action on Wixon Creek SUD utility permit to construct road board for a four-inch water line crossing under Harbert Road located 50 feet northwest of Della Love Road, sites located in Precinct 2. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is considered to take action on Bryan utilities permit to construct a 60-foot road board for an electrical line crossing under Hardy Weeden Road located in the intersection of Willowbrook Drive, sites located in Precinct 2. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates.
Move approval A through D.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is budget amendments, budget amendments, FY 22/23 budget minutes 30.01 through 30.03.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is personnel change status.
Move approval A and B.
Second. Second, excuse me. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is payment of claims claimed to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 812-1926 through claim number 812-2036, and claim number 9007-395 through claim number 9007453. Move approval? Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will skip down to number 20 is an acknowledgement of the FY 22-23 budget to actuals by fund as of April 26, 2023, and an acknowledgement of FY 2022-23 contingency budget to actuals as of April 26, 23. Then number 21 is juvenile director's report, and I don't think Linda was here, but she sent the report. We have 35 juveniles in detention, 26 are males and nine are females, and there are 27 juveniles on electronic monitoring. And then 22 is sheriff's report on inmate population. Chief.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Our total jail population as of this morning is at 710, 610 males and 100 females, and we have a total of 51 on electronic monitoring.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Number 23 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I just wanted to congratulate the community of Edge. On April 29, Saturday, we dedicated a historical marker out in Edge, and there were, there were a lot of people there dating back some more than five generations. In fact, Bryan City Councilman James Edge is a fourth-generation descendant from one of the men on the plaque out there, and his wife had never had an Edge Country Store hamburger, so after we accused him of abuse, he bought her a burger. But it was a great event, a lot of people worked hard to get that done. Della Love Road will, Della Love will have a historical marker soon as well, and if, just, I just want to encourage everyone in Brazos County, jump on and, jump on the internet, Google Edge, Google Edge General Store, Google Blue Moon Barbecue, go take a look out at Edge. It's west in the northeast part of Precinct 2, Brazos County. Fantastic historical community out there dating back from 1870 and its formation, and just a beautiful drive through the county and a wonderful place to go visit, especially if you want to just take the family on an evening out there or a trip on the weekend, it's just something you don't do all the time, go check it out. But congratulations to that community out there.
Commissioner, it, one of the unique things I found out about the community of Edge, and I didn't know this until we were in Bastogne, Belgium, for the 70th anniversary of the Battle of the Bulge, and I... Commissioner, it, one of the unique things I found out about the community of Edge, and I didn't know this until we were in Bastogne, Belgium, for the 70th anniversary of the Battle of the Bulge, and I was reading a book, and Kevin told me about this, because there's a relative. The first tank that made it into Bastogne was named Cobra King, and the loader in that tank crew was from Edge, Texas.
Wow.
And, you know, you just never know what's there until you get, until you hear about it.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted, you know, that was unique to me.
That is unique.
You just don't, you don't, you know, you don't know where it all is, but, you know, the historical significance of this, Judge, Barbara, thank you for that. I did want to say, too, that had a very successful conclusion to the MS-150 this year. I think that, you know, the writers had a great time, the people who visited Brazos County as a result of the event had a great time as well, and look forward to having the third one next April. It'll be even, I hope, bigger and better. Thanks.
Okay. And by bigger and better, you don't mean longer? You just mean?
No.
More participants.
And hopefully more, hopefully more, even more. We had great volunteers, and, but hopefully we will have even more local community engagement and involvement with that event, because it really is, I mean, this, this once took place, the conclusion once took place in Austin, and now it takes place here, so that's a good thing.
And a shout-out to Tanya Skinner. She was featured in the new Texas Monthly, I mean, not Texas Monthly, Texas County Progress Magazine for collections, for the job she's done with collections. We actually had her, when she came in, we gave her that award several weeks back, but she's actually in the County Progress Magazine this month, so shout-out to her.
Yeah.
Now, we're next is call for citizens input and our concerns, and Patrick, come up.